Everyone and good morning and welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, July 21st of 2020. With us today, we have Luanne, our executive assistant. We have several on the Zoom meeting with us and we have, the media is on Zoom meeting with us. Larry McDevitt, Jack Willie, myself, Mike Steinis are your county supervisors. And first on our agenda would be, how about Frank? Todd's not here, Frank, so are you available?
I'm available.
All right, so we're discussing the easement plan, is that correct?
Have you guys did like, Luanne pass out the drawings I gave her yesterday afternoon?
Yes, she did.
Yeah, and I drove down and looked yesterday on my way out. Coming in off of Platt, the way it looks, well, you go ahead and explain your.
Well, there already is a sanitary sewer that goes off of Platt to the north. And then you can see it makes a 90-degree turn and goes to the west. There isn't a, there is not an easement for that now, or like Bolton and Mink could not find an easement for it. So the other problem we have is that from the fairgrounds all the way to the Walnuts, all the way to Anderson Street, there's a sewer main that goes under like the Eagles, K Motorsports and the houses over on the Anderson Street side. We are trying to get rid of that, so we're going to put some fingers up the alleys and stuff. And part of the way to fix this is to get the fairgrounds sewage off that line. So we're going to put a city main up, as you can see there. And then that line coming from the northeast will go in to the new main and then out to Platt Street. It won't be going under all the buildings. So we're basically wanting to put a new city sewer main in roughly the same spot where the other, other like existing main was.
Okay, I don't think we had any issues with that. Did we have some questions about extending?
Well, last night we had our Together We Build meeting. Is there any possibility that when this is being done, that we couldn't go on to where the side of the new building is going to be?
That Together We, that Together We Build building problem has been solved. We're, we're going to be going up the No Name Street on the west side of the Eagles and they're going to connect with that.
Okay.
So there'll be a new line to it.
So.
Right. And then that there like new line will connect the Eagles, it'll kill it. It'll connect Dale Schmitz Building, it'll connect Mohals Building and all that.
Okay. Is Lanny on here? No. Does the Fair Board know that? Frank?
I have not contacted the Fair Board yet because I thought I'd go through you guys first, obviously.
Okay, okay.
If you own the property.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I guess I don't have an issue. There's, there's already a line there. So basically, all you're asking for is an easement, which is, should have been done anyway, correct?
Correct.
I mean, it's a utility easement, so that's pretty common. Sarah did have a chance to look at it here also, and I don't think she had an issue. Sorry to the email, she didn't have an issue with it. Yeah. Hang on just one second. Who did you talk to? Oh, Lanny. I guess Lanny wants to jump on here. I don't know if she's got any, any questions, Frank, but is that okay for a minute?
Sure.
I think the 10-foot temporary easement, that's just like a type for construction purposes. You've got a 10-foot temporary construction easement, is that just for the duration of the, of the?
Construction?
Construction timeframe?
You're muted, Frank.
Are we talking about the one back on Platt Street by the corridor, Snow?
No, 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 no.
Down there.
This is according to your plans, you've got a 10-foot temporary construction easement.
Well, that's just for the duration of the project, so we can do the landscaping and do the transition from the back of curb into the fairground property. That there like 10-foot easement is temporary, the other one is permanent.
Okay. That was a question from Sarah.
And it goes, it goes right down the center of that driveway that goes into the fairgrounds, is that correct?
Correct.
And that manhole that's next to that water hydrant up there, that's where it goes to the west?
Correct. In that their general area, Mike.
Yeah, I, I seen the manhole and the water hydrant yesterday and I just didn't know, went right down. And then a deadhead's up there, or where's it go when it gets over to that?
No, like, then there's another manhole there.
Yeah?
Dead ends there.
Do some of them wash platforms and stuff for the county or for the fairgrounds, do they feed into that sewer line?
If you can see the line coming in from the north, northeast, Larry, that one does come from the fairgrounds and it feeds into that old line. And, and that one will continue to feed into the new line.
That diagonal one?
Right.
The wash area?
Is that the washer or is that the restrooms?
I think Lanny said last night it was the wash area.
Okay. I, I just wondered where, where those go.
Yeah, from, I mean, like the bathrooms over there and everything, right?
You know, when they're washing the cows, there's a mess. A lot of stuff.
Lanny's on now.
But that, but that diagonal one is not going toward the barns or anything there, that wash area is right there, ain't it?
I, like, the engineers did not go back into the fairgrounds, they just, they just caught that line when they went down on that manhole. And that their line coming from the northeast is coming from the fairgrounds somewhere. So we obviously will, we'll obviously re, you know, like reconnect it.
All right. So Lanny, are you on the line?
I will unmute her.
You do that. Lanny? Can you hear us?
I can only hear you.
Lanny, are you on?
I unmuted her. She's on, but she says that she can only hear us. Well, this is probably why. Jackson County Supervisors. Hello, Lanny. Can we put her in speakerphone up front?
Yeah.
All right, hold on.
Lanny?
Yeah?
Good morning.
Good morning. I have an old computer down here with no microphone and no camera.
Okay.
But I could see you.
Okay, so anyway, Frank is here.
I asked Frank.
Yeah, I see him.
I asked Frank about the extension over to the Together We Build. And he said they're planning to come up the No Name Street to do that and then hook up Schmitz and somebody else.
Who'd you say, Frank?
Al Mohals owns, owns one of those two buildings and then Dale Schmidt owns the other. And then the Eagles will connect to that and then that fourplex apartment will connect to that line. And then the Together We Build building, they'll just go like straight like south and connect to it.
Right, so we'll connect up at the.
This here, this here easement we're talking about right now, Lanny, has nothing to do with the Together We Build building.
Right, I know.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm just saying that it would, I want to make sure that that is still on the agenda, that we can hook up down to that manhole.
On the No Name Street?
Correct.
Correct, that is the plan.
Okay.
Lanny, do you have any future plans to put any more wash racks or anything in that you might need a hookup to? Or that could be put in while these are lines are open?
Uh, not that I am aware of.
Okay.
But we also didn't know that this was a possibility.
Okay. I don't know how much time we have here, but I mean, if you have some future plans or think it might be a good idea or needed, I don't know.
How does that work into the plans if there's something that they would know, tie another line in or something, Frank? Would that, how soon would that have to know that?
It wouldn't have to know it at all because that would be just, that would just be handled, handled as a change order during, during, during the construction.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, any other questions? I believe I have a motion, I don't know if I have the second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the permanent utility easement to the McCocon Public Works Department. Is that correct or to the city?
To the Lake City.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, nay, motion carried. Anything else for us, Frank?
No, that's it.
All right, we appreciate it.
Okay, gentlemen and ladies, thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you.
You want to stay on here, Lanny, or what do you want to do?
I don't know, do you need me?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Thanks, Lanny.
Have a good day.
Hey, guys, in the pot, we should drink some water.
Yep, yep, yep.
Thanks, Lanny.
Yes, mother.
Yes, mother. Okay, Lisa?
I see on the agenda here, we need discussion of possible action on the special election for the jail bond. What are your thoughts today?
Mine still remains the same. I'd love to do it in September, but I just don't think we can do it. I don't think we have enough time to promote it. I just, we got to promote it, we're going to be all jump on the bandwagon here and, and go for it.
I think with what's happening with the coronavirus, it's still going up. I don't think we'll get people out for any type of a public meeting, even if we send out the flyers and the information. I just, I just, I would like it in September, but I really think we need to wait till March.
And I think it's a perfect time because we can put the flyers out when people are home and they will read it. When things get back to normal, nobody's doing, everybody's too busy to do anything or even think about it. I'm just thinking about the safety factor. I mean, this isn't going to be going to affect for another couple of years before it actually goes on the taxes. We need to think ahead of where we're headed too. It's not, it's going to happen now. We just need to keep moving to get it done. Something else kind of crazy doesn't go on behind the.
I just, I just, I just think it's a no win. I don't, I don't think we can get it done. I actually think it's, it would be a waste of taxpayer dollars. I really do.
Just to further the discussion, if you don't know or you haven't heard, the decision was made on Friday night that the Secretary of State's office will be mailing out all absentee ballot requests to all active citizens, active voters in the state of Iowa. So the Secretary of State's office is taking COVID pretty seriously. So, I mean, they're going to be mailing out, I had looked into doing it ourselves. But with the Secretary of State's office meeting with the Legislative Council, it was decided that the state would do this instead, so that's just another thing that they're concerned about.
So if you had a special election, you'd have to do the same thing?
You don't have to, we could.
Well, we sure don't. You, you sure don't have time to pray for that right now.
We will do what your wishes are.
I, I guess I know where you're coming from, but I just, I just don't think that it's, I don't think the timing is right. And I don't think that we have, even if we had the flyers done in two weeks and get them sent out, I, I just don't think there's time.
Do we need more, do we need action on that?
No.
Okay. Any other comments?
Okay, this morning I needed a motion to approve the minutes of the July 14th of 2020, the official newspaper.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the July 14th, 2020 board proceedings as written. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, nay, motion carried.
Motion is needed to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of $273,507.52.
Motion and second to approve the claims listing in the amount of $273,507.52 as presented. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, nay, motion carried.
And I just wanted to kind of do some cleanup work here. I did call and talk to a net spec, um, PCIA, concerning the development. Home program that we approved here. Just wanted to let you know that they're working on the paperwork still. They have not distributed the fund yet.
Really? I thought it was emergency.
So they've been approved, they're waiting on it.
Got it.
So.
From the ones that want them, right?
The two, the two, yeah, yes. And just as a side note, I know Mike and I and Marty were out to InterJackson Care Facility probably a month ago now. We kind of each had our own to-do list. One of the things that I did is that since 2005, there are files from the Department of.
Human Services.
Human Services. There's like 33 or 35 filing cabinets out there. So I did make a phone call to my contact in review and long story short, I will be at InterJackson Care Facility on Friday with Marty and someone from DHS and I believe another level person to discuss what's in the file department and who might be disposing of that. So just so you know.
Well, we talked about that since the shredding machine is still here in town, that maybe if we can, there's a lot of room there that's not being utilized and.
Well, it would be up to the Department of Human Services to say.
Right.
That's correct. They want to do one where they want to.
It's their files, yes. But I believe, I did, when I talked to Matt, I just was about to imagine the possibilities, anybody having to be meeting also on Friday. And as a side note, we did talk about shredding. So we will have a significant amount of workers that wanted to be shredded and, uh, so we keep up the workload. Which would be an incredible savings to Jackson County.
So actually, if them are, they're, like you said, that they're DHS's property, we should be charging rent for them.
I was just wondering where their address is at, we could send it.
Huh?
You were charged with that for the last 20-some years.
But the files are all for our residents.
Yeah, so, I know, but, but it'd be nice if we can clean it up and, and, yeah.
We're going to hopefully get that crossed on our to-do list.
I, I don't know if I ever did mention when we were out there, we looked at the septic drain field system too, out there and, and Jared, is Jared?
Jared.
He's the new maintenance guy out there. Dave had, is retired. And he mows that whole septic field down and it really looks nice. But when you drive across it, it's like this. It's really bad. It settles really bad. So we talked about maybe getting bids to, I had one contractor look at and he thought he could come in with his machines and level it out without bringing dirt in. Now Marty thinks that with the, in conjunction with secondary roads, that they're ditching somewhere, you know, with some good dirt that they, we can haul some out there. And you'd have to use a smaller machine, you know, you could dump it there. But you can't, you couldn't run a big machine across that drain field, so it's, he thinks he can level out what's good loader and then receive it.
Place it with good loader.
Yeah, yeah.
It was a very productive meeting.
And I don't know how much dirt they're going to, but last night at our Together We Build meeting, they were wondering about what they would do with the dirt they're going to excavate for the foundation stuff for our building.
That would not be very good dirt for, that would not be good dirt.
I don't know what that's going to be, yeah, it's hard to say.
Play down in there.
These dirt, dirt.
Well, they got samples. I mean, I'm just saying, growing grass on it.
Yeah, yeah, you're going to need topsoil for that, but, you know, maybe even, you know, short, short run, maybe in the city where they bought, purchased that property up there, maybe they're going to be looking for something too, I don't know.
Well, Lanny said that they were sure they could find a hole.
Sheriff Fairgrounds.
Okay, thank you. Any visitors or anyone else online that has any questions for the board today in the visitor section? Is Todd or Mike around yet here or no?
They didn't have any, any business unless they were talking about something.
Okay, we have a work session later scheduled with Todd and Mike at 10:30, correct? And Alex, I know he sent an email yesterday, he's on a construction project, but he may be able to call in. So that's just a meet and greet type of thing and any questions we may have, and I do have a few questions concerning a bridge that got damaged last week. A bridge that got damaged last week?
Yeah.
So we need to.
I went up to look at the bridge, I went up the road and I'm like, oh, there it is. So I looked at.
That ain't the one.
Well, it's been a hit.
Yeah, I know it is.
Broke on that too, and nobody reported. No, so, and then I went up and looked at the other one too.
So I don't know what the answer is, or Alex and Mike were there when I stopped over that evening and I, they were still talking when I left, so, I mean, the main structure itself. I, I don't know how, how to proceed with the insurance company or how to do that, so what are, what are protocols?
Something we can do or else?
No.
I wouldn't think.
I was told that you won't even find anything to replace them, them uprights that are bent. So I don't know. Maybe get a new bridge out of the insurance.
If you're talking about lowering the load.
Yeah, I know it is. Okay. Is that all we have on our agenda? Luanne, we, you crossed off already, I don't know what.
And that's not quite that fast. Good morning.
Good morning, Luanne.
Calendar for the week. This evening at 6 o'clock is Jackson County Economic Alliance meeting by Zoom for Jack. And also at 6 o'clock is a Conservation Board meeting for Larry that starts at the Black Hawk Wildlife Area. At 5:30, correct.
Conservation.
I don't know if that's why you have it.
You talked to him this morning?
I don't think you have a question.
I don't know if I seen the minutes from the last one yet either, did we?
I, I talked to Nate this morning. I want to check with him, but I believe it's that.
We'll press that one up. Wednesday, July 22nd, at 7:00 AM, 9:00 AM is an IRS conference call to Larry. At 12:30 is a Watershed Management Authority Technical Committee in a joint meeting with ISS, IISC for Larry. Also by Zoom. And at 4 o'clock that afternoon is an ECDC and ECIA meeting by Zoom for Jack.
There's also a ATV meeting in Preston at 7:00.
On Wednesday.
On Wednesday. And how I know that, because I heard on the radio on the way in this morning. I'm on committee, but nobody's emailed me, so.
All right, Thursday, July 23rd, at 11:00 AM is a Community Service, Community Solutions of Eastern Iowa meeting by conference call for Jack. And at 4:00 PM is the local Emergency Plan Committee Conference Call for all of you. By weekly call, about COVID. Friday, July 24th, at 10:00 AM is an Iowa Workforce Office Hours meeting for Jack by Goche meeting. And at noon, he has a workforce Iowa office hours, is it, is that the CEO one maybe?
Yeah.
Also by conference call for Jack. At 1 o'clock that afternoon, there is a rededication ceremony at Backbone State Park in Dundee, Iowa. And Larry will be participating in that along with the governor. That's the plan. Monday, July 27th, at 5:00 PM is a Mississippi Valley Workforce Area meeting by Zoom for Jack, followed by, at 6:30, by the Mississippi Valley Workforce CEOs, also by Zoom for Jack. Our next regular meeting is Tuesday, July 28th, at 9:00 AM. And that afternoon at 1:00 PM is a Children's Advisory Committee meeting by Zoom for Jack. And tentatively, McCocon River Watershed Management Authority meeting for Larry at 5:00 PM. The only business method I have today, last week, we approved having the chair sign the documents for the HUD for the Eastern Iowa Regional Housing Authority. There were two other documents that she neglected to include. So I'm looking for approval to have Mike sign those other two documents.
So moved.
Motion and second to approve the chair to sign the additional HUD CFP documents as presented. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, nay, motion carried.
Right. Go ahead.
Okay, so we have a few work sessions coming up yet. Is there any other unfinished business that we'd like to talk about?
Well, yesterday we had our Mental Health Disabilities Service Governing Board meeting. We had the advisory committees at 1 o'clock and at 3 o'clock. The new board has pretty well been appointed. There's still some vacancies. We still need a parent member and somebody from the educational field to serve on the, the Children's Advisory Board and the Adult Advisory Board. The drop-in center down in Davenport, in DeWitt, they're going to have an emotional CPR class. And that's going to be for providers of services dealing with people that are having emotional issues with the coronavirus. And so we'll get more information on that. The governor has set aside 30 million to be divided amongst the regions to kind of combat the coronavirus. Our region is supposed to get approximately 2.8 million for our region. DHS will let us know how or what the money can be used for.
I was going to say, how do you spend this money?
Each one of the, each one of the providers of services will have an opportunity to apply for funding. And they said hazard pay is allowable. They also talked about offset costs of providers for the COVID cleanup, supplies and safety items. But of course, we're still waiting for the list of approved items that you can have that DHS told Lori should be coming this week. They will send out the information on how, how the money can be used and will submit. And then you have to submit a list back to them from the various providers and get the seal of approval from the Department of Human Services. So we had that meeting. We also, they appointed another committee to look at contract renewals and how we want to deal with that as we move forward. They also appointed another committee that will look into the pooling aspects of funding, which we don't do. the pooling aspects of funding, which we don't do. And we all got that copy of the resolution they passed in Cedar County about against pooling. And so they appointed while on the contract is Jeff Jordan, Jeff Sorenson and Don Smith. And on the other one for the pooling is Jim Irwin and myself. So we're going to be meeting and we have to have some kind of a report back to the governing board by December thirty first. So I guess we're going to have several meetings. Several, several meetings, several meetings on that too. So.
You know, poor guy.
And, and another thing that we did change the twenty eight E agreement yesterday. So that our board can appoint an alternate to the Mental Health Disability Service Commission Governing Board. So that if I am unable to be there, we would still have a vote by someone else attending. Where before, if you weren't there, you didn't get a vote from your county. Now we can appoint an alternate. Anytime. And then we can do it next week whenever we put it on the agenda, we can appoint an alternate to the, to that.
And the alternate comes from this board, is that correct?
Yep, yep. Be one of, one of you two. I think that pretty much does it for that. We've had a couple workforce development board meetings and.
You are.
Yeah, the RFPs are, are being sent out. A committee was appointed to review them when they get back. And to move forward. Right now, all of our youth that need services or requiring services, the state's Department of Human Services is handling those and the funding of those. So it'll just be nice when that merger is complete and maybe we'll just have to have one or two meetings a month instead of thirteen and fourteen. Thank God, thank God they have been my Zoom.
You have to wear your car out.
Amen. So that's pretty much all I.
We're still under unfinished business. So you did check on the revolving loan fund thing, Lisa? And under new business, I, I had Luann put this on there. You know, when you give us this end of the year report, it's pretty interesting.
Yeah.
So I just thinking to myself, you know, I got, I got the one at home that I got a bunch of highlighted. This one's not any different than that one. Correct? She just did it twice or what?
A couple of months ago. So this would be more.
No, that was ended here. So anyway, I have some highlighted things in there and I just don't know, would it be too beneficial to, for us just to have a work session per se here in the next couple of weeks while this is right on the tip of our mind? Yeah. You know, just to look over like what some of our excess or our shortfalls, why? Or what we should maybe try to prepare for in November, you know, wouldn't that get us ahead of the ballgame a little bit?
Well, I think it's always good to review and see where we had shortfalls.
Exactly.
So even just for instance, and that's just not, I'm not picking on anybody. I mean, we had some gravel money left. So, you know, could it been used for a road improvement? If there was eighty thousand left, could it be used for that covert where that eleven ton bridge is, could it be used for that, which is an estimate of a hundred thousand? So can we somehow?
There is, that's why we handed that out because I looked at it, took it home, looked at it over the weekend, have it all highlighted. I myself came back on Monday morning and said to Shelley, what about, what about, what about? Matter of fact, we, that's part of a conversation that, look, I see Luann's going to laugh. This is a part of a conversation that we had yesterday. We talked about projects that we that had been brought forth to the board, you know, have we, have we done what we said we were going to do? And so Luann and myself and Shelley's in on the conversation that we believe we need to make a list of projects that we've talked about and make sure we know of a couple of things that maybe we're going to keep questioning, you know?
Yeah. Well, I mean, you know, like you say, it's fresh on our mind and we both have things highlighted or whatever. I think we need to answer some questions and say, hey, we're ready for this, you know?
Actually, what I think what needs to be done and probably not going to probably it's not going to be met with open arms, but I think at budget time, I think we need to know of all the projects and the equipment and programs and everything that and maybe that's micromanaging. I don't know. But at least you know that someone budgeted for this project for a road, this project for a new computer program. Somehow we need to bring forth, I mean, yes, you know, we need to make sure that if people are budgeting something specifically, that you guys are aware of it.
I agree.
Yeah.
And I think there, you know, when I, when I looked at it and was looking at some of the funding ending balances and all of this, I thought, you know, I think we better do a one field job when we're meeting with the elected officials that the department has as to what their real needs are.
Right.
You know, and, and it, it looks really good, by the way, but the thing is, you know, and some of this, this needs to be explained because some of the grants that come through, that's a wash. So that's why it's, it's deceiving sometimes, but.
Well, I mean, I think we used all those calcium fluoride. I remember it was calcium fluoride or sand. We used all of that budget. We were a little short on the rock budget. You know, I mean, that was just.
Actually, we had eighty. And I think sometimes at the end of the year and maybe Mike and them can explain it too a little better, how they, when the tickets come in and how much tons they have left in a certain area. Sometimes they have to rob from one area to take to the next area. So that's. But with that being said, again, I, we travel.
We're talking about it in July and we're not talking about it next year.
Yeah.
So I think that's the most important part is we're making discussions and having open discussions about budgets now as we move forward throughout the rest of the year.
So is it okay with you guys that we have a work session after one of our meetings here next couple, next week or week?
You know, we did last budget season. That was great. I mean.
Just went through.
This is just a continuation of that and maybe a little bit deeper.
Oh, just some whys and whats, you know, basically, if, if it's legit, then.
We had news on the way.
Yeah.
If we got money sitting there, it's just not working.
And if we have some carryover, what's our best use, you know, and we'd like to get Todd involved and, and.
Well, that's why I said, you know, we need to continually keep looking at what we're spending. Maybe monthly we'll keep doing this and you can see how the month is progressing or the fiscal year is progressing, where we have budget wise. Some people are behind already. We just got started. Some people are right on task. That's why I think it's important that we know if we said we were going to buy a program as an example for the sheriff's office, is that still on, on, on schedule? Have we abandoned that project? You know, yeah.
I guess the main thing is I don't know how much the price is.
Exactly. Right, I agree. So we will continue with that monthly printout. I think it's important that we see what we see.
So let's just, Luann, we'll set one up maybe next week and, and if it takes half hour or forty five minutes to an hour, we can always move on to do it again the week after. I got a lot of circles and stuff.
Because that's the end of July.
Yeah.
That's the end of July and this will be our last claims period for the month of July. So we will have updated current figures for you. So it's a good time.
Okay, the other thing, I'm sorry if I'm off the thing here. I was looking for my, who, somebody, Luann gave us that sprinkler system letter from, I didn't really get a chance to go through that, but I think we're going to need to address that sprinkler system somehow, some way. Start thinking about what we're going to do out there and have it at the care facility to keep in compliance.
And it's what, it's fifty years old.
Yeah, and it's, it's called what they call the dry system. So it's don't activate until something happened. Then it drops to the sprinkler head. So when they test, when they test these, if, if they randomly test them and then if this one tests bad, I, I think you're at the point where you replace them all. And I forget how many's in there, but there's too many. Yeah. So with that is our last payment for the septic system coming nearer. It's.
January, I believe.
January, yeah. So that. So I mean, that's, that's kind of maybe where we're looking to it and get, get online with that. So we'll have to keep that sprinkler system on the agenda too, Luann. So I can, if we can get through them, I don't, I'm sure you give us them, right? I had it in my folder here. But I think it's reports from that gentleman and he said, you know, I talked to him again, not, I don't know how long ago, and he says, you know, we talked about this three times. He says, I'm not, I'm not wasting my time. I'm not going to do anything with it anymore. But the point is, like Matt says too, we need to maintain compliance out there. So.
Yeah, we do.
Okay, that's all I have. So we'll just kind of leave them on there and go with them as we can. So I see Ben's here. Ben, you want to join us?
Morning. Good morning. Just got back from vacation yesterday. So back in the office, trying to get caught up on some emails and voicemails as far as all that goes. Get back in the swing of things. So I don't have much to update board on. Um, so I just thought I'd kind of give you a middle of the year update as far as where we at for permits issued. Right now we've issued, I just issued one today. So we've got thirty five zoning permits have been approved. Twelve of those are single family dwellings. So I'm still waiting on one more. So I think at the, at this point that, you know, I guess feels good, at least better than last year too. I think we were pretty low on, you know, the total number of permits issued. And then for single family dwellings, you know, a little light. You know, I think one thing that feels encouraging is that with everything going on with COVID nineteen and, you know, the economic impact of some of that. You know, I think we're seeing development occur about, you know, where it normally is. You know, as far as how to speculate why that is. And I don't know if it's just the construction business is, you know, easy to, you know, socially distance and.
Well, and the interest rates are really good right now.
That too. Yeah, that, that I think is a good point as well. So, um, you know, that's, that's encouraging. So hopefully we keep seeing those, those, that activity continue. So that's good to see.
It's surprising.
Well, a lot of it is people at home and they're doing projects too.
Yeah.
I mean.
But I mean, new homes that are going office to drive around. That's.
And, you know, we still see, you know, a lot of them are houses. I don't, you know, I don't really know. As far as zoning goes, we don't treat those any differently. They still need to meet all their minimum acreage requirements and well, septic. So they need to meet the same rules, you know, so as far as like the, the value of that type of thing, I don't, I don't know how, you know, from any.
So the value of the house part of that is on the tax.
Yeah, I would assume so. That'd be a question for the assessors, but it's just kind of a, a trend we're seeing, you know, more and more with.
A lot of them are offices.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we get a few of those where they're manned, you know, they're, they're manned.
Yeah, I know.
Um, so, uh, but yeah, that's, I guess something I, right before I left, I was kind of got, I think, five or six more permits out and get some, you know, so people can.
How are we doing on our new systems?
I'm still, still working on it, trying to get those finalized. So.
We went out to Leisure Lake and looked at quite a few of them.
Yeah, there are. I think there's always been several out there. There, the, the biggest concern I think is one at nine seven oh seven Pine Street that's owned by Don Allers or Hailers. Just a huge amount of, it's not all just vehicles. It looks like a, like a recycling operation, not just with salvage auto parts, but like, you know, can, you know, cans and stuff like that. So kind of a weird deal that I'm, I'm working on. There's been one at one zero zero three Cedar Street that's, you know, just got some lawn grass that doesn't get mowed regularly. So I'll see how we can address that. You know, now that's a thing we've discussed about examining how we should handle those as far as, you know, when to abate those, when, you know, like.
Well, that's actually kind of, no, that's private property, even the roadways are.
Yes, every, everything in that, those subdivisions and roads are private roads. So, you know, as far as as far as that goes.
I had opportunity to tour Leisure Lake here in the last couple of weeks and, yeah, so we definitely need to follow up with some of this though. I mean, I know they come to the five year road plan and, you know, there's a lot of residents over there. And there's a lot of revenue comes off over there. And I would like to say, you know, they, they've got a, they've got a, they got a legitimate point that that road needs to be better going up there. With that being said, I would like to see things a little more improved, you know, all the way around. It has so happened, it was closer than Fort July. So, I mean, as you go through there, you could have, you know, it was gunshot or fireworks, but we had to, you were ducking a few times.
That sounds like fun.
It was exciting. Yeah. We pretty much toured the whole lake, but it's beautiful down in there by that lake, you know, it's, it's a nice spot.
I think folks have done, you know, a lot to, you know, make things better from the
Well, their association needs to take charge over there too. You know, they have an association and, and they need to, yeah.
And, yeah, and I think they are, you know, they reach out when I, when they want to fill out these complaint forms, I need to check my mail. And, you know, over the last week and a half, see if they've been submitted yet. You know, I gave them ten. More than enough for what they were originally wanting me to address here within the last few weeks. So I, but I, you know, I said, make sure these come, you know, individual neighbors can obviously get nervous about wanting to say my neighbor's got ten cars in my, in their yard or I don't see my neighbor for months and the grass is four feet high. Understandably, you get nervous about reporting things like that. So at least in a subdivision or an area where you've got these. Yeah, you know, these, these property owners association, just have their complaints come from them. You know, if the, if the president or the chairperson has to sign that themselves, fine, but, you know, make sure it's clear that it's coming from the property owners association that it's, you know, you're either united or have some kind of, you know, vote in the same, you know, situation that our board of adjustment zoning commissioner, the board of supervisors would say, these are the issues that we want, you know, want to see addressed. We talked about it. And then, you know, they can, we can approach it that way. You know, we need to see those complaint forms to come in. So I've got the pictures and all that.
But we definitely need to follow up with it too. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
The other thing is a court, I, I think the week before, Sarah, let me know that court's basically back open now. So we're, you know, back to regular business. So we'll get, we'll get some of our favorites on the agenda for these appearances. So.
Okay. Keep at it. I talked to Marty yesterday. He's diligently working on the recorder's guards. And, and unless there's something specific that you want him to come and discuss, he said he just soon stay working at it and.
Looked more to be on vacation last week. I did a touch base with him yesterday morning, talked about a couple of things that I wanted to look at, take care of. And he said the same thing he's working on.
Yeah.
And then there's also, we need to put another sneeze guard, whatever, plastic glass project over at the Veterans Affairs Office. So he's going to get that done.
Okay.
Yeah. So I, I had touched with him and he's.
Keep an eye on.
One of the things that we need to kind of talk about and obviously won't happen today, but I think we need to have a discussion concerning our, the welcome center down in Segal.
I agree.
Yeah, I do too. I know they got the, so, or they got the pressure tank fixed or whatever was the issue and, and uh but if it's, it's not been open all year and no, it's probably not a good situation though.
Well, knowing is an issue, the actual maintenance of the building is an issue.
We certainly need to decide what the future of that building is.
It is not open. I thought they were supposed to open up until like first, but they are not opening. So we do have some time to get some of these projects that I've done. We need to be selling.
I think we need to just have some of the people from the Georgia.
That's why I said we need to have a discussion.
Futures going to you.
Yeah. And really, it doesn't make sense to me to keep sending guardian right down to do change of white balls on this.
Well, that's a three-hour deal.
That's right.
No, no, that, that, that just.
That's right.
Yeah, that, that. Well, it's forty-five minutes down there and forty-five back and. Stop at the gas.
At some point, we need to schedule a meeting and decide what's the best way to handle the maintenance of the building to begin with, and specifically, you know, are they going to open up soon or are they handling the ship so.
From what I've heard, it sounds like they're abandoning the ship, so I don't, I don't know. I, I mean, I, I guess we should get it from Tom or the rest.
I think the count last year is around five hundred people. That's the only, I mean, it makes sense, well, okay, we lost a lot when the bridge was out, bridge was out, I mean, just wasn't in traffic.
Sure.
I guess you can't really go back.
But, you know, now it's the end of July, so you missed.
It's May, June, July.
Yeah. And, well, and knowing is a, is a big issue, either, either we need to contract with somebody, we need to buy a lawnmower that can stay down there, and we find that someone that we.
Well, it'd be nice, like Nathan said, if we could find somebody from that suburb area that would be willing to go out there and maintain it somewhat.
Because it looks close.
I guess also other under unfinished business, after you left, Jack, last week, we did get a phone call to the Head Start.
Jane.
Jane?
Yeah, I've talked to her.
Oh, did you? Okay, so she said that your, that was all approved, the region approved it, but we're waiting on the Washington? Basically is what she said, we're waiting on. Okay, awesome. Yeah.
She said, um, it sounded like they've not find a word that they will have it. I talked to her about we needed to know. She said they probably wouldn't be starting classes till the middle, at least the middle of September.
It's coming up quick though, too.
Well, that's good news. Good morning, Lynn.
Good morning, how are you guys?
Good, now we are joined from our, Lynn Bopes, our Jackson County Coordinator of Disability Services.
Morning.
Morning. Howdy.
Howdy.
How are you? Well, I'm, haven't been here for several months, I'm sure Jack has kept surprised of everything that's been going on.
Oh, he's given us all kinds of good news this morning already.
Oh, okay, so maybe I don't even have to do this. Well, yeah, exactly. Um, I have to apologize, Jack, in the beginning, I, I was, I had the meeting on, but I've been in the middle of dealing with the situation. And so that's um, the, I joined in about the conversation with the CARES Act, so the financial piece, I'm just going to kind of punt here and you can feel free to add whatever. But yes, I am here to uh give an update on the regional governing meeting, which was held yesterday, the monthly meeting, and Jack was in attendance as well. Um, uh, the FY fund balance for Jackson County, according to the uh Region's Fiscal Agent, is about three hundred and two thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars at the end of fiscal year twenty, so. That's a, a pretty good amount, although it looks like percentage-wise, we're pretty high. We may be up around sixty-three percent at this point, is that what I, yeah, kind of gathered. Um, I'm sure this will be discussed further. This is all in relation to the intent of legislation to get that fund balance to be below forty percent.
Seems to me it was like a hundred and twenty thousand and some.
Yes.
Uh, dollars that we need to be down to, to be at the forty-fourth there.
Yeah, so, um, the other financial piece that I wanted to mention is you might have noticed already in the claims that you paid, approved earlier this month, there was a uh payment in there to Scott County's, the Region's Fiscal Agent, who is out of Scott County, for twenty thousand and twenty-seven dollars. And you will see that claim every month now. Um, if you remember last fiscal year, we made two installments of contributions to the Region's Fiscal Agent Fund in order to um provide funding for Jackson County's share of some regional expenses, and just to remind everybody, the regional expenses include the large contract, which I think this year is about three point eight million with Robert Young Center, and then there are other miscellaneous expenses that are considered regional expenses. We have liability insurance, we have an expense to pay for our data uh based network system, community services network are called CSN for short. And so for cash flow purposes, this year, the Fiscal Agent recommended that each county be billed monthly a twelfth of the total cost of what those region expenses would come. Um, he took the total cost of what he anticipates the region's expenses to be, so it's that large figure from Robert Young contract and then those other miscellaneous expenses, and he attributed an expense back to the five counties based on the percentage of population. So I think we're at six point five percent of the region's population, so our share of that is, um, comes out to twenty thousand twenty-seven dollars a month, which is about two hundred and forty thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars. So you will see that as a reoccurring monthly expense. Anything you want to add about the finances at this point?
Nope, I talked about some of the funding for the coronavirus and.
Okay.
Came to the county and how DHS had to approve how that was spent, and we've contacted the providers to get information from them. And um, I said, one of the things they said could be would hazard, added hazards. And so there's, was a couple on the board that didn't think hazard page shouldn't be a part of it, but DHS gave it its blessing, I guess, so. The big thing is, you wait for DHS forever to.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, but we give you the information. It could be December before we get a list of what would.
And that money has to be gone by then.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So there's an article in Telegraph Herald this morning about the Duke Supervisors, uh, the school had asked them about funding for like masks and different things for students. And they said, well, they're a taxing authority, but the students are county residents, so they felt that they could use that, and maybe some of that could come out of your budget too, because you had a hu, extra hundred and twenty thousand.
Yeah, um, I think.
Or even a, I mean, out of this two point eight million we're supposed to get, it should be able to come out of that, COVID.
Right, I, a couple of things, I have to be honest, I, the email to the providers in Jackson County, which really are, imagine the possibilities, the Hillcrest will go up today. I was out Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday last week, and that's when the email came out on Wednesday, was to send this out to providers, so I'll be contacting them today via email to get their input, but it sounds like they got a very good response from all the providers and they had the four counties. Um, equipment, personal protective equipment was one of the things that was mentioned, I think other things like, um, if there were physical um accommodations that they had to make, such as like the barriers that were put up here in the courthouse and even cleaning supplies and things like that, those were one-time expenses associated specifically to the virus situation. Um, because I'm sure Jack showed you, one of the cautions that we have is, this money is not intended to be used to develop new services because there's no sustainability. This is not ongoing funding, that's very evident. Um, so those kinds of expenses, real expenses, that providers did incur are things that potentially, as long as it can be documented, because the other issue becomes, these are federal dollars, and so documentation for how the money is spent is critical. If the, all the financial people not in, yeah, yeah, so, um, it is also incumbent upon what kind of documentation the providers can give to the region as far as how the money was spent specifically to this issue. It sounds like there will likely be a special board meeting. Once um Lori gathers all the information and the big piece we're missing right now, as Jack mentioned, is what's coming from DHS as far as the parameters are underfoot. So Lori will create a couple of, she will clearly spell out when she gets the information from DHS, what the state's allowable uses for this money, and then also develop the compilation of the information providers did give us in terms of what they see their needs be. You know, one of the things that was mentioned by uh the representative on the governing board from Spanline is they, it sounds like they needed to go to twelve-hour shifts in their twenty-four-hour settings versus probably three eight-hour shifts, and that is somewhat to um staffing, lack of available staffing for various reasons, again, associated with the virus. But I took it from Lynn, that one thing that resulted as a part of that was increased expenses for overtime and things like that, because with fewer staff, they ended up having to pay some staff to work more hours.
And she also said that they were having to have the, the the salaries raised too.
Yeah.
Just to be able to hire people and hire them at a higher rate.
Yes, which for them is likely, and um a permanent increase in an expense. I mean, I did not understand that they just
Right.
Put that out there as a lure to get people, but then anticipate reducing hourly wages once things settle back in place.
I think that worked very well.
Yeah, exactly, so, um, and so there are a couple of the programs, agencies truly had to spend. So for example, the Dehabilitation Program, which they bill Medicaid for, because that is done in small groups, um, they're just couldn't even provide that.
So a lot of face-to-face, they just were not able to.
Mm-hmm. So that is one of the stay tuned stories, and we're really waiting for information coming from the state, I think, before we can move forward. Uh, I think, I, what I wasn't really clear on, Jack, because this is about where I picked up the meeting closely, was, um, are they still a little unsure if the money will come to the regions but then need to be sent out specifically to the counties, or is that not even?
Thing Lori didn't know yet.
Okay.
It sounded like um some of them wanted it to go to the counties and some of them wanted to go to the regions and so, um, who knows, wait and see.
Yeah, if it does come to the county, we probably are in line for about a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. It would come, they, they determined the rate at figuring a per person nine dollar and fifty cents per person, is how they're arriving. So yes, stay tuned for that. Um, one of the other things that the governing board decided to do uh was develop a rate setting committee. What the region did this year was freeze all the rates for the providers, and what's become apparent is a large difference in rates for the like services, and so for example, maybe outpatient mental health services. There's a lot of reasons for that, and historically, that's always been the case. I mean, and Jack would remember that, I'm sure, from his days of serving on the board for the Mental Health Center, different mental health centers charged certain, different rates for the same service, and so obviously what goes into that is the cost of that agency and for them. It is, and it differs from one entity to another, so in an effort to make sure that we are applying um a consistent method at arriving at contracted rates, this committee will meet and look at various pieces of information that Lori is gathering and kind of develop a recommendation throughout this fiscal year in order to be ready to do rate setting for next fiscal year, so it's really not all that far away to get into that conversation. Uh, the board approved some minor changes to the twenty-eight-year agreement for the court-appointed mental health advocate position. If you remember, this is a position that every county is required to have in place by law. Um, it's been around ever since I've been in mental health, so I'm much longer than that. Currently, the system we have, and this is what's being proposed to remain in place, is that we have a full-time position that is employed by Scott County, but the expenses for his work, and his name is Greg Burnett, the expenses for his work are attributed back to each individual county based on the number of clients he has on his caseload. Previously, um, that percentage of clients per county was determined on an annual basis.
So his caseload per county or case, this, just all his whole caseload?
So he'll have a whole caseload number, which I'm not really sure what that is. Um, I can tell you that we have about twenty-two people out of his whole caseload, so our percentage right now, I didn't look that up this morning, it's right around six percent, I'd give again, it kind of matches our total population. Um, but that can fluctuate.
Sure.
So every quarter now, when he prepares his, because that's an invoice he would be approving, you have been approving every quarter. Um, every quarter when he prepares the invoice or when Scott County does, they'll look at the distribution of his caseload by percentage of each county. Um, and that's really, to me, the biggest
Yeah.
Change. So Lori will, now that the governing board's approved it, Lori will come with Greg Burnett and meet with all five county boards of supervisors and just discuss that in more detail and answer any questions that might arise. I know yesterday a question was raised about what happens if Greg doesn't have enough people to keep his full-time position busy, and I'm here to say I have no concern. No, no, I don't either, and so, um, you know, keeping in mind that in theory, this person can attend every commitment hearing in every county. So when you travel through five counties and you have large counties, you know, one large, two medium, and two small, there's a lot of work there to be had, so. Uh, the last thing I was going to mention was that the Chair of the Governing Board yesterday, Ken Back, suggested um establishing another um temporary committee, and this would be to look at, from a fiscal standpoint and a region standpoint, what is the best way to manage the funds for the region? Is it to have every county throw their money in one pool and have a a region fiscal pool? And money is pooled and there's not a whole lot of regard for where the money came from or who it's being spent on? Or is it advisable to continue with the financial structure that the region was set up on and which we currently operate under? I think this is coming from a couple of counties that are thinking that pooling funds would be advisable. And Jack, if I re, if I at the end of the meeting got all the uh committee assignments, that is the one that you will serve on with Jim Owen from Hunt County. Correct. And then there will be probably management team members on that one.
Excuse me, as well. Management team and board members on both of those meetings.
Yeah. So I will likely not serve on that one. I think I will be serving on the rate setting committee, which is also Jim Owen and then Dawn Smith from Cedar County.
Well, did it end up being, I, I was thinking that, that him and Jeff discussed it on our meeting, you know, and Jeff was going to be in.
Well, see, that, it got a little bit
iffy.
Complex, the conversation, and my understanding from Ken at the end was that he was suggesting that maybe Jeff wouldn't serve on either committee, these other guys had more history or, I, I'm not really sure, so I, I do stand to be corrected on that.
I, I didn't, I, I was thinking it ended up being Jeff, but it.
It could be, it could very well be. I just remembered Jim had interest in both of them.
Of course he does.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so. So that is what I bring here today from the meeting.
So you got more highlights than I gave you.
Yeah, well.
More information.
We're willing to listen. Well, appreciate that and.
I did tell them though that they kind of want enough.
Alternate?
An alternate.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, okay, yep, that is in the newly revised twenty-eighteen agreement. Any questions? Any questions?
Nope. Sure appreciate all you're doing for us.
Well, thank you, guys. Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Excellent.
Okay. That's all I have, other than if we still have a work session with the engineer staff. Ten thirty?
Let's check with Mike to see if he's coming up or if we can zoom in or I know you said that Alex would zoom in if he could.
Alex, I think, was just gonna call in maybe in conference. I don't know if he's had the capabilities. I think he was in remote, not very, I don't know if he had internet service. We sure can ask Mike if they're available, yeah?
I do have a missed call from Nate.
Hey. No.
Well, I knew we were down to just three of these board members and somebody else.
What's, what's the verdict? We're taking
You wanna take a recess for a little bit? A recess at this time?
Stacy, we have Roger, our road superintendent. We have Mike Cullen and we have, Todd is here. And we will reconvene at this time. And we're just in a work session and I think it's just, so hello and maybe updates and whatever we may have.
And Alex is on the phone.
And Alex is on the phone, yes. Did I fail to mention that?
Yeah, you did. When you, when you reconvene.
So Alex, maybe you want to give the board an update on what we've kind of been working through with damage to the bridge and, and Mike can add too, but kind of where we're at with that. And we talked a little bit, Mike and I did this morning about documenting time, like Roger and his guys had time to go out there and sweep up four drive, all that stuff. I mean, those are all costs that could be documented in a claim submitted to the insurance company. The time for Alex to do the inspections, any other, I'd say if IAW is gonna confirm the rating, if we're gonna read or derate it, all those things should be documented. If you want, you can go that back to the insurance company. So. Alex, you wanna talk about what you've done so far as the damage inspection and where you're at with that?
Yes. Apparently I have gone out there to inspect the bridge and from inspection, it appears that the cross bracing between, or two sections of cross bracing have been damaged. And with that, there have been two hangers, vertical hangers also damaged at the bridge. There have, none of the connections to the trust or warbeams system are damaged on either the hangers. They are just bent. As to correspondence for anybody, I have received contact information for a representative from the, their, does it BFI that hit bridge?
Yeah, absolutely.
Representative of their insurance company, which I have left two messages with and he has not returned any phone calls. We've also received correspondence from an engineering firm that have hired a Kent Higgins with Rite of Business and Associates. I visited with him yesterday and he was just wanting to get information and on the current status of the bridge because BFI is looking at hiring them to do an independent inspection. So I visited with him, gave him information and he was going to get back to me at a later time.
Okay, so is this normal procedure, how this works? Is, will they hire independent inspector to come in and say, I mean, to me, can, can them verticals even be fixed?
Well, so to answer your question, it's typical for them to send in their own person because it's probably a precursor to the county saying, hey, we have X amount of dollar damage to the bridge that we're submitting a claim for. So they're sending their own independent guy in to either confirm or document what they feel is that the damage to the bridge. It's not on the five-year program. I can never talk about this. It's already rated at nineteen tons or posted at nineteen tons. It's not on the five-year program. If that bridge is gonna be in service for another ten, twenty years, we probably need to look at trying to fix it the best you can and get an estimate to do that. And then that would be, that estimate, it's just like if you got your car hit.
Sure.
You're gonna get an estimate, you're gonna send it to, to the insurance company and say, hey, look, here's the damage. This is to try and get it back to its previous strike condition. And then you're, you're spending a claim plus the his time, whoever else's time and, and that's part of the damage claim. I think that's the prudent thing to do. If it was on the five-year program, I would maybe say just kind of, you know, just keep an eye on it until it gets replaced. But if it's not on your five-year program and it doesn't look to be replaced in, in the near future, then you probably want to get it fixed.
Well, let me back up here just a little bit for the sake of the media who are on. We are discussing the bridge on Eighty-Second Avenue. And it got struck by a garbage truck that had its arms up instead of down. So there was a fair amount of damage done and that bridge, to me, is about four hundred feet long. I don't, I was just guessing standing there. But to replace it looks real pricey and I guess we're looking to find out where we can go from here for, as far as maintaining that, it, it, it's highly, what's the traffic count, you know? Oh, is it? I know they said that there's a fair amount of trucks that travel to. There is a shortcut up there. Yeah, it's nineteen ton right now. No.
I'd be interested to see what the garbage truck did on it.
That's what I was wondering if it was. If full, yeah, if it's loaded, yeah. You know, well, you know, I mean, insurance companies paid for silly things that they did in the past too. So I mean, that's what they're for. So, I mean, we just need to
You mean you get something?
So it's a hanger that's entirely intentioned. I, I think it'd be something that we could, it'd be fairly easy to fix. But again, I haven't looked at the bridge. I haven't looked at the original inspections, but I think the way forward would be to bear, get a price to do a repair and then have a, set up a meeting with the insurance company and say, this is where we're at. So.
And who does that?
I would say between Mike and, and Alex, since Alex has done the inspection and did the initial rating or derating calculation. I think you probably want to use, probably want to use, I'll leave that up to Alex, but you probably want to use IAW to do an estimate for the repair. Like say, this is the repair detail or design.
Sure.
Maybe give that to Dan Trader and say, Dan, you know, what would you, what was your estimate to do this? Maybe the insurance company will want another estimate, but I mean, you don't, there's, this isn't like getting your fender fixed on the car. There's not a whole lot of people that do this kind of repair, but maybe they want to get another contractor's bid. That's fine. You can maybe go to Taylor or Frank Construction or somebody else and get a second opinion or second estimate and then have that conversation. But I think you probably need to have that done first before you set up the meeting, obviously.
Is that, did you hear all that, Alex?
I caught part of it for repairs. I thought I was gonna do it when I dropped in. That's a question real quick. But I caught part of asking Dan Trader for estimated cost of repairs. And right before that is where I finished it.
Who would, who do you deal with IAW?
Me.
Nate? So would Nate do a repair detail?
He's in our bridge inspections always, so I don't know whether he would do it, but I'm sure they have something.
Yeah, so I, what I would recommend, since IAW was involved with the inspections for years ahead of time, I would have them give you a design or a detail to repair the member that's damaged. And that cost should be reimbursable as well. And then take that design detail and give that to a Dan Trader or a Brent or whoever and ask them to give you an estimate. And then once you have those pieces of information in hand, then meet with one of the insurance companies.
So I, I guess what I'm saying, did you hear that part, Alex?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so I guess what I'm saying, as far as that bridge goes, just, we're aware of it. So whatever you guys need to do, between you and Alex and Todd, need to do, I would just go ahead and do it. Yeah, I mean, we're, it's not something we're gonna oversee anything out of anyway. I just wanted you aware that it's, it was damaged and I guess we all knew that or most of us.
We'll talk after this, all right, Alex, about who's gonna do what moving forward on that?
All right, sounds good.
Okay.
Um, anything? What else? News, information? How's it going? Alex, you all going okay?
Yep, going pretty well. I started off plans for replacement of one hundred eighty eighth Street Bridge.
Yeah, that one needs That one needs to be replaced.
So that's a check plan's middle date of November tenth. That you're, you're on track for that, Alex?
Yep, I do right now. I still am.
Okay, and the other one, the four hundred street one, that's a September eighth, check plan's middle date. IAW got that one. Don't worry about it, Alex.
That was before.
Okay.
No, they made this carry on.
I think you probably got a little nervous there. It's like September eighth.
Nope, I did it. I can break out some bridge plans in a few weeks to give me the, clear my schedule.
Okay. Is it rated there in Beacon County?
No, it's sunny. They're forming up hand boards right now and open up four, two or three sections here in the next half hour hour.
Good. Don't forget, get your depth checks.
Yep.
All right. So that's the, the project you're working on is one hundred eighty eighth street. You're on track for that? So.
Yes.
I don't have anything else.
Okay, um, I know previous, first meeting, we had talked about maybe some, a road safety plan? You said that that was available to us at some point or maybe it's still available, not available?
Here's the update on that. So I reached out to the local systems office of the DOT and the office of traffic and safety. And so they did, initially they did twelve counties and then they did, I think, another twenty-four. And then they were just asking counties if they wanted it. It was, it was paid for out of various funds. It was not an expense to the county. The, they got the counties done. They basically were showing an interest in having, wanting them to get done. And then they kind of interest dwindled, so they kind of put that on the back burner. They're currently not soliciting counties to get a plan done. But they said if there's interest that develops again, they would start it back up. And I said, well, I know of at least one county that would be interested in that. So it's, it's not a debt issue, but right now there's no ongoing program like there was a few years ago. So I would say it's not a, there's a, there's a pretty good chance if we can get some interest from other counties that don't have it, that they would start it up again. Because it's a, it's, they can use HCP secondary money, which is federal, federal safety money to pay for these. And then they also can use their traffic safety fund, which is part of a road, the Iowa Road Use Tax Fund. So those, a combination of those two funds are what paid for the planes earlier. And those funds are still available. I mean, they're still there for the go, for the DOT to access. So. So I would say it, it, for Jackson County, might be, might be a period of time, but you can always go have a consultant to do it, but I would recommend that you basically wait until they, there's enough
Well, sure, if they're gonna, yeah. If they're gonna start the program back up again, I guess, yeah, it'd be nice to have it done if it was funded from them anyway, but.
So would we need to send a formal request thing that we are interested in or just the conversation is enough?
That's a good question. It couldn't hurt just to have, like, say, Mike said something.
We should send a letter saying that we are interested in having one. And had we known they were doing it before, we would.
If you want, I mean, I could take a crack at getting you just a
Form letter or something.
Form letter and then, and send it to you guys. And then, then, once you sign it, send it. I'll, I'll get it to the people it needs to get to. But yeah, that's probably, probably good. At least then you're, you're on record as requesting one. And if they get, you know, a half a dozen more counties doing the same thing.
I think anytime you have something that's written rather than just a little bit, it has more clout, I guess.
Yeah, especially, yeah. And other than an email from me is, yeah, so. No, I'll, let me, I'll write that down here. So. Yeah, I'll get that to you. So get that directly to you?
To the wind.
To the wind, okay.
I mean, you're carbon Mike too or all them, you know. So I guess another question I have, Mike, this is probably for you. I traveled two-fiftieth and there sure is a lot of marks on that road, like hundreds of them. Is that enough? What's the plan on that road?
Well, we were talking last time that we have excess money in the budget.
Yeah.
We went up there to get a quantity so we could see what it was gonna cost.
Yeah.
We marked down all the areas that we felt needed to be patched and they're measuring them.
Well, that's, that's everything. Well, it looked to me. That was the whole road.
You could just go down the whole thing.
It's, it's somewhere route around five hundred patches.
Percentage ones coming to the road.
Is, yeah, is that feasible for a highway that's fifty years old or do we try to make a plan to do half of it? Do a third of it? Do this every, when we No, I'm talking about resurfacing, yeah.
Well, resurfacing, you probably would have to split
Patch a manual.
You definitely patch it anyway, but you'd have to split it cotton bill.
Yeah.
Because it's too long of a project.
Right, right. And I understand that, but.
But it's not on the five-year road plan at this point.
Yeah, I know, but it, but it's, but it's gonna be a real problem for five years to go.
You said pavement's fifty years old?
Seventy-two. Six, six inch being that's back.
It's forty-eight years.
It's only six inches thick.
Yeah, that's why I'm starting out. You know how that works. Starts rotten from the bottom. Yeah, so there's areas that burn.
So what's your typical rehab? So say you pass it now, would you crack and seed or just overlay it?
We'd overlay it, but the inner layer.
Inner layer.
We did crack and seed a couple of projects and it just fell apart. We had to do another hundred to two hundred thousand miles for the patching after we cracked.
How many inner layer jobs did you have?
Three, four.
You had luck with them? We've done two and they reflected crack the next year.
Well, we've had some cracks, but not like you would have if you didn't work it out.
Yeah. We did, we did a job coming out of Lost Nation where they had sanders who were manholes in the road and we did crack and seed that section. And we cracked and seeded the other sections and we did an interlayer over the entire job. That section had more panel cracking significantly more than the part we cracked and seeded. But we ended up getting more cracks. And then if we just would have done crack and seed in the five-inch overlay, like that's what we did years and years before that. Then we tried this interlayer about three to four years ago. But, yeah.
Yeah, we did that. We cracked and seeded on the road, the cave road out here to camp there and put five inches on it. And they were, the cracks were showing before the favor.
And you actually, so like you had new patch and you had pieces coming loose.
Oh, yeah.
So there's probably overcracked it, I guess. Yeah.
They were like the inside of the curves were chipping off.
You get those little, I call them little mushroom, horse shoe cracks at the edge of the pavement. Those, if the panels get loose and they rock, it doesn't matter what you do.
No warranty? Before they drive off, the job site just cracked in it? There no warranty on that?
Unless it's a like actual failure in the mix, you're not gonna get it fixed.
We did a seven mile interlayer job over at Springfield and the boys went out this summer and made cracks on it. Two thousand feet of cracks in seven miles, which I think is bad because we should have seen it all before.
It was, it was as bad as this one is, yeah.
And that was recent?
Within last year.
Last year, yeah. So we just got one season. Yeah. So like the older, the project we did, they, so they had this, this massacre test that came in with that percent recovery. So they changed the, the percent recovery used to be like from eighty-two to ninety. So then they bumped it up. That's when we built that project. So basically the, the binder is a higher quality binder, obviously, but that recovery percentage was lower. The next project we did, they, now it's like you have to have, I think, from ninety-two to ninety-six percent recovery. And I think that'd be a big difference from one project to the next. So you guys are probably building stuff with the newer, the massacre test numbers that, that basically, I think, provides a better product for sure. So.
We ended up putting five inches on top of that. It was a six inch kind for sure.
So six inches total with the interlayer?
Five inches.
Four, four inches and then one inch for the inner layer?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's
Put a leveling course down over, over first and then the actual inner layer and then two inches half those up now.
Okay, so what's the total section with the, what's your leveling course? How thick was that?
It was, well, we figured the edge and it it uh overran like ten percent.
Oh, so anyway, so you got a fit, no, forty-eight year old pavement?
And there's about five hundred fifty patches.
And you wouldn't crack and see it anyway, so if you patch it, it's not like you're gonna come back and crack and brand new patch, so you're not gonna be able to.
It's not around the back.
So it'd be a while. If you had more section, I'd say you should do a grinding job, but I wouldn't grind a six inch pavement.
We talked about that a couple of years ago and.
A fifty year old pavement.
They they've done old paintings, as long as it's structurally solid, you can. But if you're gonna take a quarter to a half off to get it smooth, then you start with six inches. And like you said, it does rock from the bottom up.
So that's what we're doing up there anyway, is trying to get a get a quantity so we can see how much, you know, roughly it's gonna cost.
Well, yeah, that's a good idea. I mean, it definitely needs it. Um, I would just want somehow if we could move that E seventeen up for some of our, maybe with if we had some excess from the bridge up to Iron Hill and then maybe we can move something ahead. I'm just looking at options.
If you're gonna, that E seventeen project is probably gonna be around a million dollars. Overlay that.
Mm-hmm.
You don't wanna necessarily pay that out.
Well, we certainly wanna utilize the the funds that would that we got coming to us or what we can obtain. Um, yeah, I just don't know if there's any way to expedite that.
I think we need some ideas as how we can use that excess money.
Efficiently, effectively.
You know, I just think that, um, if we have it, we should utilize it to provide better travel.
So if you use that for a local project, they don't fund any of it, we won't get any funding for that? If we're borrowed out X amount of years, how I I am not really following how that formula works. So is that a farm to market? That's farm to market?
So that's, you know, farm to market roads, you wanna use your farm to market money or swap money.
Mm-hmm.
Which the Y sixty-one is is farm to market.
Sure.
But we don't have money, so we budgeted there. We do have this excess in local budget, but we couldn't patch this.
Have you guys determined how much of the carryover balance you're considering this spend, like overspend?
We have not discussed it, no.
You had said, I thought that first meeting, you should have like twenty-five percent of our our budget. We generally run with a six and a half million dollar budget, so you're looking at one half million dollars is what you want to have in your reserve. Roughly.
And your, what's your carryover?
Two points.
We're at two point seven.
Seven, so you have one point three.
Depends on that swap money, how that's gonna come in. Or not swap, but.
Road use.
Since it told it.
Yeah.
Whether there's gonna be a decrease in that, like you keep saying or not, we don't know that.
Well, if you say you roughly have a one point two million, I would definitely, I would recommend you don't try and spend all that all at once.
No, no.
You know, if you gotta, you know, find out what the patching job is, if that's a half million dollar patch job, maybe you do that and then reevaluate budget when you start your budget discussions, November, December.
We're gonna start them next week.
Yeah. So I would, you know, pick, like you said, pick a project that this is your, one of the things you wanna do to improve the the traveling conditions. Do that if you got a bridge that or a couple of bridges maybe that you can say, man, it'd be nice to get those two off our list. Uh, but I would, if you got one, if you say you got one point two million, I wouldn't try and spend it all at once.
No, that's, well.
No, that's not our intent, but. Um, I just think we need to use some of it for.
Do you have like any local bridges, like say trailer bridges that you could move up, use that money or not?
It's others, I was with that bridges, we don't have the materials to do it and and Dan is, well, last time I talked to Dan, he's pretty having issues with the COVID and and people being off and stuff, so he's behind, so I'm not sure he'd have time to do them this fall.
Well, so.
Doesn't necessarily have to be this fall.
Right, so I guess what, I think what the board would, so you have an option for a paving project or a patching. If you had an option for two, a couple of bridges and you had like say three menu items to choose from and then and then just let, you know.
Yeah.
Dan can't do them, Dan can't do them.
Yeah.
Uh, you probably just need to get choices, I guess.
Yeah, that's what we're looking.
I like options.
Is that, did we decide where we're gonna go forward with that Leventon up there or just a lot of ditch work up there north of?
Yeah.
What road is that?
Maintenance guys.
Three ninety.
Three eighty.
Three or three eighty.
Yeah, that's three eighty. Um, yeah, maintenance guys did some ditching there to get the cover screen better. Um, I haven't talked to the property owners up there yet. We're gonna have to have some more property. I I talked to him initially when we were up there taking the section.
Yeah.
But I don't, they wanted to know how much real land we're gonna need.
Yeah, I actually ran into him one day and he said, yeah, he's more than willing to talk, yeah, so.
Oh, how far or how close do you are be to your borrow head limit for VR money?
I think we're three and a half years.
Okay. And I mean.
If we go through the five year road plan, I mean, we're like five and a half years.
Um, and this, this, I'm just throwing it out there as an option. I mean, we have done projects where we done a local letting for like a uh altie or or continuous type of side, so you could use, you could also use this money and have a letting and do a bigger bridge if you wanted to, that's what I'm saying. So you don't necessarily have to do two or three small ones. If you got really a larger structure, if you, and again, you're gonna be spending local, I shouldn't say local money, secondary road fund money to do a bridge instead of using VR money. But if it's a bigger priority, you you have, you can do that. You can have Alex prepare plans, do a local letting and have like say, say Dan Trader come in and build a bigger bridge for you and pay for that with local money.
Mm-hmm, okay, well, I I mean, that's what I'm looking for. That's what we're looking for, I should say. We're looking for options like that. I seem to think of of the road maintenance projects more than the maybe the bridge. Unless it's a priority and left us laying in the creek, you know, but.
That was close, yeah.
But I'm looking at some of these roads really, you know, especially as like this E seventeen, I know you had talked about extra, they would they add two foot to that somehow? You had mentioned that, I didn't quite follow all that. So if we could get it wider or safety or rumble strips or something, this is also one of these roads with no shoulder.
When you said it'd widen your, uh, Goose Lake Road. He's thinking that you added two feet to the outside control.
No.
You paved. You didn't widen.
Right, so what?
No, yeah.
You paved, instead of having an eleven foot paved lane, we now have a thirteen foot.
Yeah, so.
But the shoulder, the actual travel way or the road top width didn't change, it's just how much of the road top is paved change.
So that Iron Bridge Road is, or Iron Hill Road is twenty-eight foot and cabin base, paved, actually actually no shoulders. And it striped at twenty-two feet. So what he's asking is, would this road safety program add two more feet outside of that, so you'd have that level thirty-two feet wide road top?
No, so there's, they they're called systemic type improvements, they're meant to be applied over long segments of road and like with a per mile lane cost of less than like twenty-five thousand dollars. What you're talking about is like grading, widening shoulder by adding earth or dirt or whatever, just that H SIP money would not pay for that.
Good. But would they do the rumble, rumble strips or the mornings, whatever you wanna call them?
Uh.
Are we cutting them in out there, by the way? Are we gonna do that or what's that?
Price for.
Okay.
They'll pay for rumble strips then.
But you have to have this road safety plan, right?
No. I found that out too. I'm like, so what are these counties doing? They're accessing H SIP secondary money without a road safety plan. This literally, it's a three ring binder and I just say, okay, Goose Lake Road is supposed to have paved or widened shoulder and edge line. I take out that page, I sign the bottom of it, a big estimate, I send it in and then that's my application. They said that without a local safety plan, you just propose your your safety improvements and then you fill out the application. You just don't have that, that form to send in with the application.
So can we add that to the, our portion of Goose Lake Road then for next January?
Goose Lake?
The north part.
The part you shouldn't have did when we did our.
We talked.
So where are you at with the the?
Well, we haven't sent in check plans. The plans are done.
Yeah, I will get an application into Chris Paul right away.
We did, I mean, I didn't widen, so I'll have to change a lot of people. We were milling two inches off and putting four inches back, so we'd have to do a widening. Would they pay for the widening? We have to go trench it.
That's a good question.
I just.
You mean with your Colton plates? They do pay for the Colton plates, so when we widen the mat, they'll pay for that, so.
But we didn't. That's not what we're doing, this Colton plates.
I would propose what you wanna do and send it to them in an application and they'll tell you whether or not. I would not say, hey, would you pay for it? I would say, here's the application, we wanna do a two foot paved shoulder with edge line rumbles and satellite rumbles and here's how we're gonna do it. Here's the cost estimate for the safety only word in the other side.
So we we need to send this also for edge line and center rumbles for the Iron Bridge Road now, right?
No.
That's too late.
It's too late for that one.
It's gonna be fourth project.
Yeah, it's not a retro payment, they will. Cause the way it's set up is like when you, when he does, when Mike does the plans, there'll be a division one for the pay items. Those are all the pay items that are non-safety related. Then there's a division two that you have to track all of the safety related pay items under a separate division. This is how they track the costs. I mean, they're all basically the same pay items, I mean, cause you're gonna have, except for like the rumble strips, those will be the only ones where you have division two cost and not division one cost.
Okay. So I mean, the the patching thing is 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 got my attention. If you think it's gonna help, it's gonna last.
So how do you, so Mike's gonna put together some options for spending this extra money. I'd like to set some of that. So what do you like, what is a good, do you wanna put it on the agenda when you start talking about budget or do you wanna do that before or how do you wanna do that?
I'd say whenever he hasn't ready.
Okay, so like in a couple of weeks? You tell me, I don't.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
But I don't know if you can get it done yet this fall.
He, he's like about building it this fall. I I mean, it'd be very unusual to have a three, two week gap in schedule.
No, I would, I mean, you're talking about. I mean, if we're, if our options are gonna be patching or we're gonna do an extra bridge or something like that, but them are just optioned at that point. And we and we don't have to have it done this fall, but we. Yeah, I think so.
I think just often of what to do and then the cost estimate three, four. And I would say you'd have like, depending on how much, so you wanted, so let's talk about, you wanna spend about six, seven hundred thousand of it?
We wanna, we wanna look at the options. And estimates. Yeah.
So I put together choices that would accumulate to that amount or just over that.
Options and estimates.
Maybe they'll give you transfer extra money to.
One other concern I have, Roger, and you might notice this, going up Seavening Ridge Hill, you know how that back top broke off on that west side? We really need to put some pilings or something down in there to hold that, so that that that's, that's gonna be a, it's such a nice road now. But if it's gonna fall off there, I mean, come down there with a school bus and it's not. It's something needs to be done there.
We talked about it a little bit early this morning.
Oh, okay. I don't know what the answer is there, I guess, maybe.
Rock, right? Right.
Or it is something.
But we can't leave it fall off of there, so we gotta, there's gotta be an answer or some, how thick is it there? It's a. Yeah, it's a foot thick.
What is it?
You can probably explain it better. It's an over.
In the black top going up a very steep hill.
And there's guard rail, they're right next to it.
Yeah, it's steel.
Eroding next to the edge of the asphalt, yeah.
It's just sinking almost, falling up. But the guard rail and everything's moving.
Yeah.
Do you have room to to flatten the slope to, so it drops off right into?
Yeah, it it does drop off a long ways, yeah.
And they're rock close to the surface.
They they hit rock when they put the guard rail. The guard rail needs to be raised. For what it is now, it's. Like you said, it's.
I I don't like to say when when Dave does a bridge for us and they're up too close to, he can't run a core drill. A core drill, so you can start piling in, but fucking. You might wanna put that one in your choices.
Well, I mean, somebody needs to look at it anyway and see if it's a priority or not a priority. I don't know. To me, it looks like if it gets worse, it's gonna be an issue.
If it gets worse, it's gonna cost a lot more money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's such a nice road right now.
Yeah.
So is Alex still gonna work on the, um?
South Main Bridge, I was just gonna bring that up.
Yeah.
Alex, you still there?
Yep, I am.
Have you looked at that bridge yet?
Uh, which bridge?
The one in South Main, that's the city and county both co-owned.
Yes, the last time I was down there uh for a meeting, I actually looked at it on my way there as well. Uh, has there been any new development towards working with the Coca on that one?
We, we have said that we would supply the engineering for that project as part of our match.
Okay.
Well, I'm not so sure that we decided we would do that until maybe you were on board.
Yeah. But we also, I talked to him before.
Yeah, that's what I mean, but we didn't say we were gonna pay for the engineering if somebody else was doing it.
No, 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 I didn't do that.
Alex, have you looked, is it on the 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 city BR replacement candidate list? Can the city get BR money?
A million dollars.
They've already been awarded it?
Yes, yes.
They've sent in their paperwork, but they haven't gotten the copy back, signed up. It was awarded.
They got the money, oh, good, okay. Awesome.
Yes, at thirty percent ours.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven percent. In the city and the rest is ours.
Oh, well, I was the other way around.
Oh, I thought it was the other way around.
I think.
Si- somebody drew the city limits diagonally across the bridge.
I think so, gotta be a planner, probably an auditor.
I think the city was, um, thought we were gonna send out for the whole design too, I don't know, maybe somebody should talk with them if we're gonna have Alex designing.
Yeah, Alex said he could.
Yeah.
With the walkways and the lighting and all of that, he would be doing that.
Yeah, there's a ten foot trail crossing the bridge too.
So does the city of Coca and Jackson County have a twenty-eight E moving forward for the project then?
No.
That that'd be the first step is to find who's gonna do what in the scope and then.
Sounds good.
Okay, so the city got that, that cover whole project.
Hmm, they're saying in one square.
About the snow.
They gotta build a few those sites on the trail.
They want a trail there, the bridge is gonna have to be probably, I don't know, fifty or seventy feet longer.
There'll be a lot of utility.
There's a water, water, city water line, sewer line just on the other side of the bridge, there's fire hydrant right next to the.
Oh, let me ask this question. So when they submitted their application, they estimated the cost they used, was that for the entire bridge or their thirty-seven percent?
Entire.
My turn.
I was gonna say, if that's, if a million covers twenty or thirty-seven percent, that's an expensive bridge, but they applied for the total amount. And they'll be able to use, even though it's only part of their jurisdiction, they'll be able to use the entire amount to cover the county's portion. That'd be something you wanna try to figure out for sure. I guess, I mean, the DOT is that's that, they're the people that would approve that, so just the whoever's. Can bring that high level system probably. But if they applied to replace the whole bridge and the application stated they're only have partial jurisdiction of it, that should have red flagged then, and if they approved the total amount for the full replacement, then I would.
Yeah.
You could really pitch a fit if they said, no, by the way, that only covers parts of it. Well, you're, I mean, in the application, we told you it was only part of our jurisdiction and then you applied.
We could just give them the rest of the bridge.
There you go. Redraw the course.
Like the state gives us extra highway.
Okay, so that was good discussion. Uh, concerns, Rogers, Stacy, Mike?
So some of these smaller bridges we're talking about, the wood deck ones, would they work to four cap on those? So some of these smaller bridges we're talking about, the wooden deck ones, would they work to pour cap on those? So we're doing a, I mean, a pour.
Definitely. I, Mike and I talked about this this morning. Um, so I was gonna probably talk to Mike here before I left too, is that I was wondering, I would like to get a cost from Dane. Keep seeing Dane, a contractor, or like if Dane works, hope he's listening, though. Uh.
Or Jeff, is Jeff busy down there all the time? He came up.
Jeff is busy, yeah. He's pouring a deck today, a widening section. Uh. So I would just wanna get a cost and say, cause like, I, I mean, just initially I looked at, so I think they got a ten beam superstructure for a wooden deck. And what controls the rating of the bridge is the timber deck. So the beam spacing is not being determined by the, the section of the beam. It's being determined by the capacity of the plank that runs between the beams. So you have very close spaced beams because your deck plank is the limiting factor. So when you pour concrete deck, you eliminate the, the concrete or the timber deck issues. You still have to size the deck, the concrete deck to support the load, but you can span out the beams much more.
Told us.
Yeah.
So I think we need to find out.
I think it'd be good just to get a, a cost differential.
Oh, you know, and Larry was talking about this a couple of weeks ago or last week, you know, that bridge that, I mean, there's four inches of gravel on top of there. There's eighty thousand pounds on that bridge already.
I don't know if it's that much, but yeah, so, but the thing is, is that if you can get it fairly cost neutral, I mean, keep in mind, you're, this is the difference between a concrete and steel deck versus a timber deck. Um, now timber decks more than likely will have additional maintenance. Uh, not necessarily, but more than likely you'll have more maintenance on a timber deck than you will on a concrete deck. Um, so when additional costs are, are, are cost neutral, I think you're gonna get a longer lasting bridge.
Yeah.
Out of a, a concrete deck bridge than you would a timber deck.
Definitely.
Well, I think we need to look at the options.
Absolutely.
I think, I was just gonna call Dane if you don't, I would say, hey, Dane, what is it, thirty, forty fifth street bridge, you know? He's probably seen it, right, the, what you set out?
Yeah.
Just what would it be to, to say, the thing is, so you got ten beams already. I literally, I think you could viable five of those. Pour a seven inch concrete deck and, and basically you'd have to change your cap a little bit. Cause you're not gonna pour, you know, I mean, I guess you could keep the same cap. I mean, that's up to you guys, but you, you use a, a channel cap right now, right? Are you welding it on top?
For an H file on top of the filing and for a channel on top of that.
Yeah, and I mean technically you could still use that, because, um, yeah, I mean, you wouldn't have to change that, no, I think about it. You could still use that cap, that load transfer system and then all you're gonna do is space the beams farther apart. And then he's gonna have to get a price for some deck piling for the formwork and then a price for the concrete steel and see where that is versus. Thing is, you're gonna have to inventory five beams, right? So you're gonna potentially have to just save these beams or when you order them, if you have an order of these over five lefts, I think you're spending about, what was it, thirty thousand in beams, twenty-six, thirty-seven, thirty?
Two, yeah, thirty-six thousand.
In beams?
Yeah.
And you wouldn't be able to cut that in half, cause part of that is your, your cap system. So maybe you save fifteen thousand in beams. If Dane can do the debt for fifteen thousand, I think you probably wanna do that. But that's up to you guys.
I think it's something I need to look at.
I'll talk to Dane and, and just have him email a, a price to Mike and myself and say, hey, what if we switch this to a five beam system? Same, uh, same above mid cap system. All you're gonna do is pour a seven inch deck on it, seems.
Okay, I'd like to see that.
Anything else? Questions, concerns?
So I guess the only thing to that though is you guys were doing, finishing those out, right? But to compare apples to apples, you'd wanna say, if Dane's basically gonna do the whole bridge now, right? So you'd have to kinda give a cost of what was it costing you to finish it out?
Save.
So you can compare that to what Dane's doing.
I mean, to save your expenses there and there's plenty of stuff to do the way that, you know.
Right.
Um, cause I mean, I've actually.
I mean, you could still have them planking up and everything. It's just that, I mean, I'm guessing you guys wouldn't want to pour the deck, right?
I think we just need to know how much would cost and there's always something else the bridge, the guys that finished the bridge is gonna do.
One more question for Alex. Um, the trail from the Hurstville Center to the intersection, have you looked at that?
Uh, would that be up, uh, South Main Bridge?
No.
No, this is out north of town.
This is for cons.
This is for conservation for.
This is for conservation. So first of all, you'd probably have to find out or ask him if he's got time to look at it and if he's willing or something he wanna do. You might wanna give him a personal call.
Okay, I'll do that.
Discuss that.
We canceled our conservation Thursday and Friday tonight. I think it might get scheduled for next week. People could have you come down.
Yeah, definitely.
I think you wanna, I think you or Nathan are gonna wanna touch base with somebody, because the plans are already there, correct? Somehow, some part.
Preliminary.
Yeah. To see if he's capable or interested or.
A shoulder trail just to run from this very short distance. We have the money and it's sitting there and we just needed to get it spent.
It's from the grant, with loop grant yet though, yeah, that's what it's from, Alex.
Okay.
And Dave, Dave or somebody maybe too would have information for that, Larry, or what?
Nathan does.
Nathan or, yeah. He knows the plans or what?
Yeah. Yeah, we got those plans up.
Maybe dig something up and give him a call. You got his number, right? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, wanna reconvene so we can adjourn?
Yeah. We, I reconvened, yeah, way when they walked in, right when Alex called, I reconvened. Are we finished, gentlemen? Back to work. Motion to second to adjourn, all in favor? I opposed. Motion carried. Meeting adjourned.